My apologies, Mayor. Mayor Daggett?
Here.
Vice Mayor Asland?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Councilmember House?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember McCarthy?
Still here.
Councilmember Sweet?
Here.
Councilmember McCarthy, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
It's my pleasure. The city, the mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
Councilmember House?
Thank you, Mayor. The Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands, still inhabited by native descendants, border mountains sacred to indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations, who will forever know this place as home.
Thank you. All right, we are going to recess to swear in the new councilmembers and me. All right, just for purposes of logistics, we will swear in Mayor Daggett first. We then will swear in Councilmember Sweet, Councilmember Garcia, and Councilmember Spence. We'll call you up each as your time arrives.
Mayor Daggett, if you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I Becky Daggett do solemnly swear...
I Becky Daggett do solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona...
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same...
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
Will you report, repeat that?
And that I will, and defend them against...
And you have it written down.
Yeah, exactly. Let's start. That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same...
And defend them against all enemies...
And defend them against all enemies...
Foreign and domestic...
Foreign and domestic...
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge...
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge...
The duties of the office of Mayor of the City of Flagstaff...
The duties of the office of Mayor of the City of Flagstaff...
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability...
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you.
All right, next, Councilmember Sweet? And if you two would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I Miranda Sweet do solemnly swear...
I Miranda Sweet do solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona...
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same...
And defend them against all enemies...
And defend it against all enemies...
Foreign and domestic...
Foreign and domestic...
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge...
And that I will faithfully and...
Impartially.
Impartially discharge...
The duties of the office of Flagstaff City Councilmember...
The duties of this Flagstaff...
The office of the Flagstaff...
The office of City Councilmember.
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability...
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Councilmember. Councilmember Garcia? If you two would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I Anthony Garcia do solemnly swear...
I Anthony Garcia do solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona...
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same...
And defend them against all enemies...
And defend them against all enemies...
Foreign and domestic...
Foreign and domestic...
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge...
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge...
The duties of the office of Flagstaff City Councilmember...
The duties of Flags...
Of the office.
The duties and the office of Flagstaff City Councilmember.
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability...
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Councilmember.
Thank you.
All right, and last, Councilmember Spence? If you two would raise your right hand and repeat after me.
And I am left-handed.
I appreciate that, but we'll stick with right. So, I David Spence do solemnly swear...
I David Spence do solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona...
And the Constitution and the laws of the State of Arizona...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same...
And defend them against all enemies...
And defend them against all enemies...
Foreign and domestic...
Foreign and domestic...
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge...
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge...
The duties of the office of Flagstaff City Councilmember...
The duties of a Flagstaff City Councilmember.
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability...
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
If you all would come up for please. Is it everybody there? It is everybody. Well, this, for a photo for Hattie, we need a designated member to come over. No, I'm sorry, I meant to say, the entire new council, including you. Councilmember House, sorry. And where is Castle? Where's Vice Mayor? No, oh yes, sorry. I don't know.
Good afternoon, new council and new mayor. My name is Rose Tohi, and I'm the Coordinator for Indigenous Initiatives. Those are my four clans. And I'd like to start this with Dorothy, our community leader and a community member here. She's gonna do a blessing for the new council. And then we also have some honor gifts for you.
Yeah, good afternoon. As my sister mentioned, my name is Dorothy Dinetsosigishi. And in introducing myself to you and my, with my clan system... I'm gonna say the majority of my prayer in Navajo, so the holy people can understand and hear us. And I'll translate at the end. And after I'm done with my prayer, I will give each of you, in your right hand, a pinch of pollen. If you're allergic to it, just go like this, and I won't give you any pollen. But what you do with it, is you rub it in your hand, and then you bless yourself with it, from the tip of your toes on it, to the tip of your head. So, we'll go ahead and say the, I'll start the prayer. Flagstaff City Council, oh yeah, oh yeah, oh yeah. Oh yeah, oh yeah. Oh yeah, oh yeah. Oh yeah, oh yeah. Austin Ashland, oh yeah, councilmember, oh yeah. Oh yeah, councilmember Anthony Garcia. Oh yeah, councilmember Kara House. Oh yeah, councilmember Lori Matthews. Oh yeah, councilmember David Spence. Oh yeah, councilmember Miranda Sweet, oh yeah. Oh yeah, 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 oh yeah. I ask the holy people to guide and bless each of you in your new role as City Council Mayor and councilmembers. And that you will make your decisions based on good thought process. Good decisions that apply to all five fingered beings. Our Anglo relatives, our African-American relatives, our Latino relatives, as well as our indigenous relatives. That you make your decisions equal to all of the people of Flagstaff. And that you will make decision, your decisions in a good equitable way. That it will be, that your, the decisions that you make will protect the lands of Flagstaff, the people of Flagstaff, the mountains of Flagstaff, and all that surround us. I ask for these blessings and prayers, as you go forward as our leaders of this community. Oh yeah, oh yeah. 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 Oh yeah, oh yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, Shada, Shadaja. She's, she's younger than me, but sometimes she's a lot wiser than me. So, she's both my older and younger sister. I asked our relatives to stand with us, just to help us in supporting this prayer for you. That you will help in the flourishing, in the growth, and in the goodness that dwells within this place, in this city. And that those good things will always be something that we will all be surrounded with. And as we do our work within the city, and as we live here, as well as outside, outside the city limits, that all our relatives will come in a way that is welcoming, in a way that is supportive. And that we all will be good neighbors to each other. Those are the prayers that have been said on your behalf, as well as on our behalf, the community members. So, yeah, I wanna just, if you wanna stay, stay here with me, that's okay. You're welcome to sit back down, too. Thank you for being here. We have community members, as well as some indigenous commissioner members here. Yeah, there's just a couple of things I wanna just say a little bit about what you'll be getting. And you can read about it. But you will be getting a silver prayer feather, whether to wear or just to lay within, on your altar, wherever that may be. We have eagle feathers that represent a lot of significance, as far as prayer and ceremonies are concerned within our indigenous people. Even the United States symbolizes the eagle as well. So, just giving you a little bit of information on that. You also have a fetish horn-toed, known to our Dina people as our Che, our grandfather. And there's a story that comes with it, where he challenged lightning being, lightning being, when there was chaos that he was creating. And so, he challenged him to protect the human life, the humans, his human relatives. And how he, because of that, he was able to protect our, the humankind, the five-fingered ones. So that's the story with that. And then also, there's an abalone shell, which the, oh, a seed is also known as Abalone Shell Mountain. And that is always to remind you where you are at, the sacredness of this place and the mountain. And, and to have, you know, to be, to have connection to that. So I just wanna give that to you on behalf of our relatives. And not just our indigenous relatives, but all who dwell within this place. Yeah.
Yes, that is correct. We would invite you to take your seats. Mayor? You don't normally see me over here. Now my glasses on, which has been a problem for several things today. At this time, I would invite any members that might, of the public who might be here, that want to provide any sort of comments in celebration of the new council, to come forward. Thank you. Andy Fernandez.
Okay, I must thank you to this, this diocese here, Andy Fernandez, born and raised in the Flagstaff, Flagstaff native son. Now, a scenario here where I have grave concerns, I've stipulated this numerous times. I came to this, to the, to this chamber this afternoon, 45 minutes before, and there was no, there was no agendas. Now that's ridiculous. You know, this is a violation of the open meeting laws, which I've stated numerous times on some areas, especially with Mrs. Evans. And her, her reign as mayor, she had facilitated a few of these as well. So I'm just gonna stipulate that right now, 'cause if you really want transparency, especially the new council, then you better adhere to the policies and put these, put the consent, consent contract, well, I mean, I consent, but the agenda's here. And outside, they used to have the podium out there, and they used to have a little, a little agenda holder right next to the staircase. Now with that said, I, I'm here 'cause, well, because of my mother. Very strong woman, beautiful, beautiful heart. Neighbors, Paul Dominguez, and everybody would say, "Go swing by." Mrs. Fernandez, you, you put the men, the men to shame. She's out there laying brick, doing stucco, Nick and Pisky got sick. One of the Knights of Columbus members doing our tile work, so mom finished it. Now unfortunately, we had some scenarios here a few weeks ago, with a couple, a little over a week ago, my mom passed away. So, I love you, Mom. I love you, my heart. I pray for you here, and for anybody that knows our family. The services will be at Ruffelman's Funeral Home on Friday, the 20th, in Prescott Valley, Arizona. And then 10:30 here at, at the Calvary Cemetery. Now with that said, I also wanna say to my brother Cleve Manelli, who passed away last year. He was another activist that was from our, from the family, our Che family. And I'm Kianli Bidewar. And he was a man of truth and honor, like myself. We never sold out, all those years. And I've campaigned for several other people here, just like I did with Mr. McCarthy, who I asked for a little favor to write a nice little letter to facilitate a private scenario. But it seemed like every time I get to help, someone get into office, they forget who you are. They become part of the, the big cloud. Anyways, again, yeah, these are our lands. We need to take care of them. We're growing way too fast. You've seen what happened a couple of years ago with a lot of resources. Both dams almost empty, and now we're growing everywhere. We need to, we need to grow smart. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez. I'm sorry about your mother. All right. Are you coming down for this item, Jasmine?
I am, if I, I just turned in my card.
Yes?
Hi, everyone. I know many of you. Even those who don't, I just wanna say hi. My name's Jasmine. I'm a citizen. And congratulations. I wish you all the best. Make us proud. Can I take a picture from here? You look so special at the dais.
Because you have that sort of camera, absolutely.
$10 Facebook Marketplace.
Today's the day you start. All right, we are ready for roll call. Mayor Daggett?
Here.
Councilmember Asland?
Here.
Councilmember Garcia?
Present.
Councilmember House?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Spence?
Here.
Councilmember Sweet?
Here.
Next up, item number eight, selection of Vice Mayor. According to our procedures, it is typically the councilmember who received the most votes in the last election, which would be Councilmember Sweet. So I'm looking for a motion to select Councilmember Sweet as Vice Mayor.
Madam Mayor, I move that we select Councilmember Miranda Sweet as our new Vice Mayor.
I'll second.
I'll third.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And now we are going to recess for a reception, roughly twenty minutes.
All right, we are reconvening. Next up on the agenda, item number 11, open call to the public. This enables the public to address the council about an item that is not on the prepared agenda. Comments related to items that are on the agenda will be taken at the time that that item is discussed. Open call to the public appears on the agenda twice at the beginning and again at the end. And for the first open call to the public, we take a comment for 30 minutes. And because whatever you are telling us is not on the agenda, we cannot respond. And you have three minutes, and there's a clock right here. And let's go. Ava Putzover.
City Council, Mayor, thank you for serving, and big congrats to the new council members. I really appreciate the time and effort it takes to prepare for these meetings and to thoughtfully deliberate. I'm here to speak on behalf of more than 320 Flagstaff residents who signed our petition asking you to put an immigrant safety ordinance on your future agenda. If you recall, we had this kind of conversation once before, a few years ago. The city council decided against codifying any protections. This do-nothing approach resulted in more of the same. Despite promises, detention and deportation of people without documented status have continued at an unchanged pace or worse. Last year was particularly brutal, and I encourage you to look at the data compiled by Syracuse University and ask your own police department for detailed reporting on activities and policies related to migration enforcement. We are asking you to discuss and adopt the following provisions in the immigrant safety ordinance. Prohibition on use of city resources for federal immigration enforcement. Explicitly ban utilizing city resources, property, or personnel to assist federal immigration authorities in enforcement activities or conduct its own immigration inquiry and enforcement activities. Restriction on data sharing. Prohibit both direct and indirect sharing of residents' information with federal immigration agencies, ensuring that personal data collected by city departments is not used for immigration enforcement purposes. And the third, mandatory compliance audits and staff training require the city departments and divisions to audit and revise their internal protocols to ensure adherence to this ordinance. This includes training staff to comply with the new regulations, particularly concerning data sharing restrictions. Thank you.
Thank you. Grace Vaughn.
Hi, my name is Grace. My paternal grandmother was a Polish refugee who was sent as a child to the United States for safety during the Russian Revolution. I'm now the Director of Northern Arizona Immigration Legal Services. We're the only low-cost immigration legal service provider north of Phoenix in Arizona. We're accredited by the United States Department of Justice to practice immigration law through their recognition and accreditation program. We've been in the Flagstaff community for eight years, and among other things, we provide options evaluations and legal assistance for community members who want to legalize their status. The majority of immigrants in Flagstaff have been here for years. They make our food, they build our fences, they clean our homes. They're not recently arrived criminals. Most of them are in mixed-status families, which means that in the same household, some are citizens, some are residents, some are undocumented. And I want you to know that there is a lot of fear on the ground in the immigrant community right now, and that that fear is warranted. The incoming administration is openly gloating about their plans to remove as many immigrants as they possibly can. And I want you to have some numbers for reference. During the last Trump administration, over 141,000 people were removed from Arizona. 272 were taken into ICE detention from the Coconino County Jail. And the Coconino Sheriff's Office has repeatedly defended their stance that they will collaborate with ICE beyond what is legally required. There are other Arizona sheriffs that don't do this. The Flagstaff Police Department still maintains a policy that lists contacting ICE as the first thing to do when they have reasonable suspicion that someone is present without documentation. There are other police departments that don't do this. And while it's been repeatedly emphasized that law enforcement is only interested in removing criminals, the hard data shows that a full two-thirds of the people who are taken and deported have no criminal history at all. And I know that the reason that all of you are in the position that you are in is because you care deeply about the people in our community. We've all seen increased examples of reckless xenophobia aimed at immigrants in our community. And so much of it is driven by misinformation, misunderstanding, mistrust, and fear. But it continues to reinforce the divisions between us and them. But we're all just us. My organization is doing everything we can to prepare the community for inevitable separations that are coming. But we are asking you to do what you can do to protect the most vulnerable of us in this community, including our immigrants. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleen Maring.
Good afternoon, Mayor, new Vice Mayor, Council, including our new council members. Thank you so much for providing the public this time to speak. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Colleen Maring. I'm the Chief People Officer and General Counsel for Northern Arizona Healthcare. And at the brilliant suggestion of Councilmember Matthews, we've been regularly attending council meetings for the last several months to provide updates on what we're doing here in Flagstaff and changes that might be coming and things that we're celebrating. And today, I have another fantastic celebration and achievement to share with you. Both of our hospitals were just ranked best in state for infection prevention by the Arizona Department of Health Services. Infection prevention is a key measure of how safe a hospital is. Hospital-acquired infections are a leading cause of mortality and morbidity in healthcare. And so many people have to work together, and so many systems have to work together to stop those infections from occurring in a hospital setting. So the Arizona Department of Health Services is the Arizona regulatory body that oversees and licenses hospitals, and they monitor infections at every hospital in the state. And for this most recent quarter that was reported, Flagstaff Medical Center had zero cases of three of the most common hospital-acquired infections, Clabsys, Cauties, and MRSA. So this put us as number one in all of those categories. I believe we were the only hospital with zeros in multiple categories for the quarter. So we're extraordinarily proud of our colleagues and our systems that have been so successful in keeping our Flagstaff and Northern Arizona residents safe. But thank you again for your time, and we look forward to seeing you in a few weeks.
Thank you. Andy Fernandez.
Okay, Andy Fernandez, actually, I should have mentioned when I came up here the first time, my scenarios that most people here that were here probably didn't even know where, because, you know, this was years back. But I ran for mayor twice in 95, and then actually 95 campaign season for '96 was the election, and then 2005. And also, Congressman, I was also number three out of 15 candidates for the Coconino County Superior Court, pro tempore for Page, Arizona, and a congressional candidate for District One. With that said, I also wanted to say that I should have gave my mother's name as Connie Marie Fernandez. I said she's the strongest individual I've ever seen. Like I said, people would go by and say, wow, Mrs. Fernandez, you're out there doing a man's work, and you could do better than they do. And she would say no to anything. You know what I mean? She wouldn't say no to anything. So with that said, I'm here because of her strength. That came from my mom's side, and her honor and integrity. So now with that said, I have a couple scenarios that I wanted to address, but mainly the scenario of the area addressed, the open meeting law scenario. But the library right across the street. I've had several people, I've heard of some certain people complain, I've heard of several people complaining. We spent over 15, 17 months there doing that construction, and you have this big, huge, nice path for a skateboard, but you have the sidewalk, it's only, it's not even four feet. You can't fit but one person walking by. That's pretty pathetic. They spent all that money, and then whoever signed up on it said it was okay. On the blueprints, did a pathetic job, because I say, actually, I'm Army Corps of Engineer, I'm a US Army veteran. I have a couple other scenarios, but that was my first entry into the United States military. Now, my other scenario is we need to start addressing issues and moving on to the forefront accordingly. I have a scenario here where, we heard Dr. Kevorkian here a few years back, probably like, what, 19 years ago now? Now with a scenario here, now this is relating to my mother's scenario situation. My sister notified us that my mom had fallen off the bed, they were going to put rails, while six days later, it happened to while six days later, it happened again. That was some pretty egregious negligence there on her behalf. But the scenario is euthanasia. That's what the dog pound does for cats and animals and any other stray animal. Now, if it's done correctly, this is the same thing they use at the hospital for putting people to sleep while they do their surgeries, but at a heavier dose. So you can pry wolf on a federal, state, or county scenario for the county, state representative attorney's offices for their defendants who are criminals in the penitentiary, waiting for death row. But my woman here, my mother like this, they took away her life support, no life support, and she, me and her had discussed it, she didn't want that. But she had a broken, she had a fracture in her back, she couldn't even get out of bed.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez.
So we need to bring that up to the forefront, so people like that, don't go through the cracks. That's appalling, thank you.
Azariah.
Shalom. This is going to sound a little weird, but God has sent me here to warn you guys that He is going to send a plague over Flagstaff, and I have a prophecy that I have to share for you guys. Flagstaff is barren and dry, a high place where people go to offer their incense and sacrifices to idols that can neither hear them nor help them. So my sword is set against them. It will not be sheed until I fulfill my word. Sis ad nez avo. That's all. Shalom.
Thank you. All right. That is it. So we will move down to December work anniversaries.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This is our December work anniversaries, so I'll start with our first-year anniversaries. We'll celebrate those that are in recreation. We've got some staff here from Public Works, as well as Water Services, our library, our courts, as well as community development. And so congratulations to all those employees who have just finished their first year with the City of Flagstaff. We have some of our five-year anniversary employees. Melanie works as a collection specialist. She's part of our management services team. We also have Christine Pavlik. She might look familiar, you see her a lot with housing. She's before council, usually presenting ideas for your consideration related to the We also have Guy Rogers, one of our police officers, as well as Sam Ellsworth. She likes to go by Sam. She's one of our buyers, also within management services. And Bailey Shotina, she's one of our business system analysts. She actually works in Public Works, so she's helping them get their accreditation for streets, as well as solid waste, facilities, and fleet services. Morgan Murray, another one of our police officers, he's been with us for 15 years, so congratulations to Morgan. Todd Martine, one of our police sergeants, is celebrating 20 years with our City of Flagstaff. Todd served for quite some time on our Employee Advisory Committee, got to know him very well there. Jerry Wintala is one of our police sergeants. The name might look familiar. He does a lot of the media releases for the Flagstaff Police Department. He's really been building out that program, also celebrating 20 years with our organization. So I know Alvin is here with us today, so I will invite him and Jen to come down. Jennifer Brown is the Section Director, both for Fleet Services and Facilities. She's going to share some information about Alvin.
So Alvin has been working with Public Works for the last 25 years. He's seen many vehicles and equipment come and go throughout his tenure here with the City of Flagstaff. Oddly enough, we worked together when I was about 19, and he always gave me a rash of experience and some maybe funny jokes on my way and saying I was late to bring a vehicle. However, this is Alvin. He's always got a smile. He's seen lots of equipment, heavy equipment, from trash trucks to loaders, to police cars, fire trucks, and he is just a huge asset to the City of Flagstaff. And this is Alvin with the best smile ever. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alvin. Councilmember Aslan.
Thank you, Alvin, for your service. Sam, I hope you're listening over there. I know I shouted at you during the light parade that we have some snow cats that aren't named yet. Maybe Gold Tooth is a nice name to name a snow cat.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council. That is the last of our presentations for today, but we'll be back in January to celebrate some more.
Thank you so much. Okay, liquor license, public hearings. Just a couple of things for our new council members. If you want to speak, you can either put a C or a Q in the chat of the Teams meeting. No conversation about the meeting, just a C or a Q, or you can raise your hand and get my attention. Liquor licenses, we have these hearings, and we recommend to the State Liquor Board either an approval or a denial, but the State Liquor Board has the final say, and I believe that we have not seen one that we've sent for denial be denied by the State Liquor Board. So, here we are. I'm going to open the public hearing, and do we have a staff presentation?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Georgiana Stasky, and I work in the City Clerk's office. Before you today is a liquor license application for a new application of a Series 12 license for Los Tapatio's located at 3300 East Route 66. The agent on the application is Jose Gutierrez Barbosa, with owners Jose Gutierrez Barbosa and Henry Alexander Cisneros handling the day-to-day operations. The Police Department and Community Development have conducted their respective investigations. There were no concerns noted from the Police Department. There were two violations noted from the Community Development related to the historic preservation. However, staff is working with the owners on the violations, and they should not have an impact on the requested license. Representatives from Community Development and Police Department are here to answer any questions you may have, and representatives from the business have also been invited to attend the hearing today.
Thank you. Council, do you have any questions? Councilmember, this is going to take me a second to, Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As a new council member, novitiate to the order, so to speak, I was wondering, do we look into some of those code violations here on the dais at this point, or does it really not make a difference whether or not that had happened for the liquor license?
For a violation out of Community Development, that wouldn't be something that we would consider. Sometimes we will see that there is an application where there was some sort of a liquor license violation, and so we can talk about that and ask the applicant to speak to us about that and so forth. But in this instance, no.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, is there any public comment?
I have received no cards, Mayor.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing and am looking for a motion.
Mayor, I move that we forward the application to the state with a recommendation for approval.
I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Thank you. All right, moving down to our regular agenda, consideration and adoption of a Resolution Number 2024-53. This is a resolution adopting the City Council 2025 commemorative flag designations.
Just wondered if I could comment just briefly before Stacy presents. Many years ago, the council expressed an interest in government speech displaying certain flags on behalf of the council's sentiments. This policy was drafted in response to that, and it basically allows you as the council to designate which flags you want to fly over the next year. Without getting into the details, the legal advice on it, councils can do this as government speech, and I just want to make sure the public is aware of that as well. It's not something where a third party comes to the clerk and says, please fly this flag. That's actually not allowed under the First Amendment, but government speech where the council selects which flags to fly based on an ordinance, or, excuse me, a resolution each year, each December for the following year, and that's what this is happening tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Stacy Salzberg, your City Clerk. I, as you know, I solicited input from each of you in regards to any additional changes or additions to our flags for 2025. I didn't receive any modifications requested, but I did receive one request for a new addition. That came from Councilmember Aslan, it's going to take a little while, to consider a flag in May for Star Wars Day on May the 4th.
Thank you. Yes, please do.
Well, yeah, I was noticing that this was the only recommended change from last year. And, you know, I just want to mention to everybody, I do take our flag recommendations very seriously. I think our government speech is an important asset, and it's something that we should use judiciously, but also as a way to make our collective voice from the dais heard. That said, I don't think there's anything wrong with having a little fun with something like this, and as I said last year, this is not a hill I'm willing to die on, so please hear me when I say I won't be offended if we decide that this, there's too much brevity in this recommendation to move forward with it. But I threw it out last year, it got knocked down. I promised I'd be back with it in the future, and I will continue to be, I think, because I don't see why we can't have a little bit of fun with this.
Thank you. Council, any, Councilmember Garcia.
I hope you could extend a little bit of grace. I haven't figured out the Teams thing yet, so I'm going to be raising my hand for this meeting, and hopefully this meeting only. So, my question is, when I was looking through the, was it a resolution that we're reading for the flag thing? I wasn't sure if I saw any designations for that single day use, and I was just wondering if it's clear in there that we can add a flag for just one day.
That is a good question there, Councilmember. Mayor. We would just make a motion, and with the, if there was a change with the the resolution, including the change that was suggested.
Yes. However, I think the question that's being asked is, is there an ability to have a single day flag versus a multi-day? Is that, am I understanding your question correctly?
Yeah, I saw that everything was broken up in either month or half-month segments, so that's where the question kind of just, I don't know, it's the only thing I thought of.
Yeah, it's a good question. So the policy, I believe, has got some provisions within it that really tries to keep those flags to per month with a duration of two weeks if we were to split the month. So two weeks for the beginning part of the month, two weeks for the latter part of the month. That said, council is able to, you know, we're here to carry forward your direction, and if we, if there is a determination that you want to have a single day flag, we can accommodate that.
And if I may, Mayor and Councilmember, welcome Councilmember Garcia and Councilmember Spence. There is a specific section under the policy that says, "Flags shall not be displayed for more than 30 days," but there's nothing that prevents it from being displayed for just one day. That is something that is allowed. It's to be displayed for a period of time that is reasonable or customary for the subject that is to be commemorated, but no longer than 30 continuous days.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I was, with that, I think I would be okay to support Austin and his idea, but only just for that single day would make sense to me. I couldn't see it being up there for a couple of weeks, but I'm okay with that. And then after we get this discussion done, I have one more question.
Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Aslan, you know that I love that you bring this forward every year, or at least for the past two years. And I think last year, we had the conversation about, you know, the Star Wars days and the expansion of this, the celebration, which I very much love. I, my main concern with this sort of, albeit fun commemoration, yet not quite rising to the level of our other flags, is some of what it could potentially open the door to in terms of other people. Like, I know the city attorney just was sharing that these flag designations are up to us and not the recommendations of the community, but we've seen other community members come forward as we make these recommendations with suggestions of other flags. And, again, not that I would necessarily be opposed to it, but what happens with the group that comes forward and wants us to recognize Hobbit Day, or any of those sorts of other, like more?
Is that a thing?
It is, it is a thing. It's in September. We're going to celebrate.
Actually, it would be September 22nd, wouldn't it?
I think so.
That's Bilbo and Frodo's birthday. It's also my birthday.
Well, then, we're definitely celebrating, sir. And now I just gave you another idea for something to introduce next year. That's going to be on me. But in all seriousness, as much as I love the Star Wars Day, I just, I worry about the message that it sends in terms of the other commemorative flags that we're displaying and the seriousness with which those are taken. I wonder if, and I think I suggested this last year, if maybe like a proclamation or something to recognize the day, but not taking that step would maybe be the better option. And I would be all for and would be happy to introduce in late April for a Star Wars Day recognition. And I think it also ties in very well with our dark sky city considerations, our celebration of the big bright moons that we can always look up and point when it's during the day and say, that's no moon. But all of those sorts of things, I think, maybe are better suited for within these halls versus on the pole. That's just my thoughts on that.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't sweat it, Councilmember House. You know, I do think it's okay for us to put a little personality into what we do and the things, but I appreciate the concerns you're bringing up. I recognize you as a fellow geek, and so your consideration bears, brings extra weight for me. I'm happy to retract the recommendation. It's really not that big of a deal, one way or the other. I just, you know, I'm just one to sit up here and say, we can poke fun at ourselves and be a little lighthearted from time to time, but it's, again, it's not, I think it's already taken enough of our time. So I look forward to whoever makes a motion, whether it includes that flag or not.
Any additional discussion? Councilmember Matthews, then Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't mean to be a buzzkill, but Jim is in the room, and we had this discussion last year. Last year, we had the poll stolen twice. It is extra work for our staff. Some of the flags that we raise, you know, personal Some of the flags that we raise, you know, personal commitments to or mean something special to us, but not for the whole community, and so I would like to put out there, I gave this a lot of thought, that we discontinue the extra flag poll and the various flags that go on. I may be the only one, but I'm just putting it out there.
Thank you. Counselmember Garcia?
And I apologize for not getting the work in on time. I literally misread the date as far as turning in the flag recommendations, so I don't have any new flag recommendations, but I wanted to ask counsel if they'd be amenable to extending Hispanic Heritage Month for the duration that it's State's Spanish Heritage Month, so that would just make Domestic Violence Month half the month, then United Nations Climate Change half the month, and then Hispanic Heritage Month would go for the duration of the time that it extends from September 15th to October 15th. That would be the only change that I would recommend.
Can you repeat that one again, Counselmember Garcia?
Yes, if we could make one change, I would, if I could make one change, I would make it to extend Hispanic Heritage Month from September 16th through October 15th. The duration that Hispanic Heritage Month is celebrated, it's, it's, it's a little bit of an awkward timeframe. They don't use an entire month, they use two halves of a month, so it'd be two weeks of September to fly Spanish Heritage Month and two weeks, the first two weeks of October.
Yeah, I would be supportive of that, Counselmember Garcia, and I think it's significant to recognize the full duration.
All right, so I will entertain a motion to support, hold on, I'm getting back to the agenda. I will entertain a motion to support the resolution, and if you'd like to add in the, the edit.
If I might, it could be a motion to approve the, or to adopt the resolution, or to read it, actually first, a motion to read the resolution with the amendment indicated by Counselmember Garcia.
Who would like to do that? Counselmember House?
And Vice Mayor, this is a, or former Vice Mayor, this is a bit of a gift for you in that consideration. I'm going to keep it very simple, that I move to read Resolution Number 2024-53 by title only with the amendment from Counselmember Garcia.
Is there a second?
I'll make my first second.
Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. City Clerk?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff pursuant to the City Council policy on the display of flags, designating all commemorative flags that will be displayed throughout the year 2025 on the temporary pole in front of City Hall as amended.
Can I have a motion to adopt?
I move to adopt Resolution Number 2024-53.
Is there a second?
A second.
Woo-hoo. All right, any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. All right, item number 15, open call to the public, and I do not see any. Okay, item number 16, informational items, two from Mayor, Council, and Staff and future agenda item requests. So this is where council members can share information about community events that are coming up, or talk about an event that they attended, just share general council information, and then on future agendas, you'll see a, a council member commission update, and that's where you, you speak specifically to what's going on in the commissions that you are on, which you will be on commissions, or you have that opportunity if you would like. I guess nobody forces you. So, let's start with Counselmember Matthews.
I have nothing to, Mayor, thank you.
I was hoping you could illustrate it for our new council members, but, okay. Counselmember Garcia?
Okay, so first of all, I, and this is the time when we mention what has been going on as well?
If it's relevant to your work on City Council.
I think this would be somewhat relevant. So I wanted to let everybody in the community know that myself and David Spent, or Counselmember Spence, went down to our council training this last week, where we met with, I don't know the exact number, but between 50 and 70 different cities from our, over 90 cities in Arizona, and we met with other folks that were in our position, like-minded folks that are just starting out as their leadership roles in the community, and we were taught quite a few rules, regulations, laws, and the best part, the takeaway for me was the amount of relationship building that we met there. I really wanted to thank the city for sending us and allowing us to learn and to build those connections with other folks around the state. At that same meeting, we, we, we found out how many similarities we have with other communities in Arizona, and how a lot of our challenges are very similar as well. And moving forward, on December 21st, we have our, a group in Flagstaff has our longest night vigil, that'll be at Heritage Square, which I will be attending.
That is exactly what this portion of the agenda is for, so right on.
Thank you.
Counselmember Aslan, I'm sorry, I'm still.
That's fine, don't worry about it. Call me whatever you want. I only have a 25-minute speech time, Mayor.
Cool.
Not to give you PTSD, that is a joke. I just want to give our new council members a heartfelt welcome. I look forward to working with you both over the next two years. I look forward to watching each of you grow into the position. I look forward to watching you guys make the same mistakes I made when I was new and have a good chuckle about that, and I think you both authentically represent parts of our community, and I know there are folks out there who are glad that their voices are going to be represented and that they're glad they're going to be feel heard. You guys deserve to be up here, you worked hard, you campaigned hard, and you made a difference, and you're going to make a difference over the next several years, over the course of your term, and I just want to congratulate you and welcome you.
Thank you, Counselmember. Vice Mayor Sweet?
Thank you. I too wanted to welcome the new council members. I'm really happy to have you on here and to be working with you. This weekend was a crazy weekend in town. There were so many events, I couldn't keep up, and we have another busy week ahead, but I do want to give notice that tomorrow at 5:00, we are launching the Giving Machine, it's at Heritage Square, and it's kind of like a vending machine, but instead of getting a candy bar, you donate to different charities, including Boys and Girls Club of Flagstaff, Family Food Center, and Flagstaff Shelter Services. It goes from December 18th through January 1st. Hope to see you all there.
Thank you. Counselmember House?
Thank you, Mayor. This past weekend, I was able to attend, actually on your behalf, the Gun Violence Victims Remembrance Service at, or Ceremony at the Murdoch Center. It was a beautiful time, we had a lot of very, very meaningful presenters and statements from gun violence survivors and people who have been impacted by that, so it was a very meaningful time. Counselmember Sweet stole one of my items for today with the, the, yeah, that's okay, but the Giving Machine, although I, I believe it might start at 4:30. Yes, so, yes, for the actual launch, it will start at 4:30 PM, and I think that's it, outside of Counselmember Garcia already brought up the Longest Night Ceremony, and with that, I'll just close out with welcome to Counselmember Garcia and Counselmember Spence, and congratulations to Vice Mayor Sweet for your new role. Thank you.
Counselmember Spence?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to express my appreciation to the city staff who have welcomed us as new council members. The training down in Phoenix was very meaningful, I thank you for that support, and most especially, I, I want to thank you for the entry card to be able to access City Hall 24 hours a day, if I feel like I have to come in and, and use the council break room for looking up materials or doing any research that I might have left here, so a big thank you to city staff, I really have felt welcomed, and I'm ready to go to work. I'm most interested in the process by which council members are assigned or selected to be on various commissions and boards, and I want to ask if voluntary attendance, in addition to the assigned council member, if, if I'm interested in something but not assigned to that particular group, is that something that is encouraged for additional attendees?
Stacy?
Thank you, Mayor. Excellent question, and actually, we will be talking about that at our first meeting back after the holidays, so we will be making those assignments and talking through that process, and we'll be sure to answer your questions in terms of other abilities to attend as a council member to a variety of these meetings, so stay tuned, it's coming very soon.
Thank you very much.
And if there's a current council member who's on a commission that you would like to be in, probably candy, money, whatever, if you wanted to bribe them. I too would like to, to welcome you, and thank you both for putting in the time to go down to the League event. It's really important to take advantage of those opportunities, and I appreciate that you would give time before you're even sworn in to go down and do that, so thank you. I just want to mention that the Longest Night, that is Flagstaff Shelter Services that does that, and it's a really meaningful event, and it's very somber, and I would just encourage people to come and join us for that. All right, that is all that I have. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, Counsel. Briefly, congratulations to the newly elected officials, congratulations Vice Mayor Sweet on your appointment. Mayor, congratulations on your successful campaign and reappointment to mayor. We, we are all very grateful for your service. I want to mention mostly for the benefit of the newly elected officials, we very purposefully kept this agenda light tonight, as we did last week when we recognized our outgoing council members. We are now approaching the holiday season, which is a bit of a downtime, you know, many of us will spend that time getting caught up in, in business as usual, but generally speaking, things will slow down over the next couple of weeks. Of course, no council meetings until January, January 7th. A comment on that is, the agendas won't look like this in January, we'll be back to full-on business. I do want to thank you both, the newly elected officials, for attending the League of Cities Training, it's invaluable. At the end of January, we have a two-day retreat, January 30th and 31st, and the first full day of that retreat will be a continuation of what you likely heard with the League of Cities, more focused on our community here, but more of, of that type of discussion. We look forward to it, it's a very interactive day, it is facilitated, we, we will have a well-trained facilitation team coming in, we've been working on that agenda, we look forward to it. It will be a time for us all to get to know each other in a little bit of a more informal setting. The following day, on January 31st, we start getting into budget stuff, and that will likewise be facilitated. I know that's on your calendar, just wanted to give you a heads-up on that. We wish you very nice holidays ahead, enjoy some downtime, because business will pick up right after the new year. Thank you.
City Manager, was I under the impression that our retreat's going to be at the Enchantment this year?
No, we reschedule it for the Biltmore.
Thank you.
Yep.
Or Public Works.
It, it will be at the Core Facilities, which is Public Works, yeah, and we'll give you directions, yeah.
Counselmember Aslan?
Thank you, as, on that note, I was going to talk, my first recommendation would be the Tiki Room. No, we recently had a Coquenino Plateau Water Advisory Council meeting at the Rio de Flag Facility, found that facility to be incredible, great space, really nice audiovisual equipment, a nice setup, just a recommendation, maybe not for the end of January, I don't know if you've set things in stone yet or not, but for one of our retreats this coming year, I, I think that'd be a nice place to bring everybody to, so we can explore it a little bit and get to know it.
Thank you, and if I may, Mayor, we are set in stone on the Public Works facility for the upcoming retreat, but duly noted your comments, and we will have opportunity to visit the Rio site. We were out there today for the Water Services send-off for Shannon Jones and a little bit of a holiday celebration, it was wonderful. Thank you.
All right, so before I adjourn the meeting, I want to remind counsel that we are going to take a group photo, and we are also going to take individual photos, so please don't run out of here. So, we are adjourned.